Are you ready? You gonna tell me the truth this time? Light of me and smile. All right. Hey, can you guys hear me out there? Probably not. All right, good evening, everybody. How you doing tonight?
Good evening.
All right. So let's let the Santee City Council meeting of April 24th, 2024 be called to order. Tonight, we're going to do the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And the invocation will be one of our first-time pastors here. And that's so we are privileged to introduce Pastor Craig Barnett of Carlton Oaks Baptist Church. Craig earned his Bachelor of Science degree from the United States Naval Academy, commencing a distinguished 20-year tenure in the United States Marine Corps, culminating in his promotion to the rank of Lieutenant Colonel before retiring in 2012, a period for which we are deeply grateful. Post-military service Craig pursued theological studies at the Master Seminary in Los Angeles, California, attaining his Master of Divinity degree in 2016. Since 2017, he has faithfully served Carlton Oaks Baptist Church, a bastion of a Christian faith nestled at 9225 Carlton Oaks Boulevard in East County. At the heart of their mission lies a commitment to proclaiming the Bible as the infallible word of God and fostering a tight-knit community devoted to mutual spiritual growth and outreach. Craig is blessed with a loving wife Janet, with whom he shares a remarkable journey of the last 30 years alongside their two accomplished sons. As we gather tonight, we extend our gratitude to Pastor Greg Barnett and ask for his guidance in prayer for the United States of America. The state of California, Santee, and this esteemed council, please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led tonight by Michael Coyne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That will do it after.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we praise you, for you are worthy. You are the Creator of heaven and earth, and you hold the whole world in your hand. You are the King of kings and Lord of lords. Or in terms more familiar to us, you are the President of presidents and the Governor of governors. We thank you, God, that you have granted us the privilege to be involved in our own governance. So we pray that everyone here will recognize that privilege and not take it for granted. Lord, we also thank you for the mayor and council members and other members of the staff and the citizens who are giving of their time and efforts to serve their community tonight. And as we gather, we ask that you'd help us to realize that while we may believe in separation of church and state, in reality, there can be no separation of God and state, since whatever or whoever we seek to honor in our policies and decisions is our God. Father, help us to recognize what Scripture states, that there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are instituted by God. Help us to remember that any authority any person has ultimately comes from you. Therefore, help each person here to feel the weight of responsibility that they have toward you more than to any human constituency or voting block. And as the meeting proceeds, Lord, we ask that you would grant grace and patience during the discussions that will ensue. We ask that you would give wisdom in the making of any policies or decisions. We ask that any decisions made would promote the spread of the gospel and allow for true flourishing of the people of Santee, of people of every ethnic background and every socioeconomic status. Lord, we also ask that the churches of Santee would partner with and support the work of this council, to the degree that their decisions are in accordance with your will as revealed in the Bible. And may the churches in this city never abdicate their responsibility to pray for this council and for every person here. We pray that the proceedings today would honor and glorify you, and we pray all these things in the matchless name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
If you would join us in our nation's pledge by placing your right heart, your right hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. And let's go to the calendar. I would like to move the item number... What is it? Thirteen? Thirteen up to just before the public hearings. That way, we can be respectful of the time of our deputy sheriffs. And is there any discussion? All right. And then are there any other items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the consent calendar? Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Koval?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the calendar with the change?
Second.
Have a motion, second, please vote.
Councilmember Hall, can you please lock in your vote? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
Yes, sir, we have three speakers.
Please call them.
Eleanor Ailsworth Walsh.
Yes. Yes, speakers will step up to the lectern and make sure the microphone is so that we can hear you, that way it gets into the record.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Short. I just, you know, I was talking to Ron Hall about my issue and also Sam. I wanted to ask that the council consider, there's a pathway near where I've lived for 12 years in Santee, and it goes from Cottonwood, from the community of Countryside Magnolia, along the overflow parking for the concert series in the park to the park, I forget, Center Park Road. And there's an informal path that's been there for the time that I've lived in Santee. And it's been, it's been taken over partly by some hooligans, vagrants, and I've been seeking assistance, as have other community members in my small community of Countryside Magnolia. And I was, I wanted to know if there's anything I could do. I'm retired, and I'm happy to help. Try to work with some organizations or the council to make it a more formal walking bike path and also do what we can to deter the vagrants in the woods at the corner of Rochelle and Cottonwood. And I've tried to work with the Sheriff's Department, and Sam's helped me with some issues here. And I've also reached out to Joel Anderson's office and the county and some other people. But it's, it's something that I think would enhance the community, and I know many people would really like it because people walk there, and a lot of us are retired and older, and we're feeling threatened by, if there was a more formal type of a path with some rules posted, maybe it would help. That's, thank you.
Okay, great. I know exactly where you're talking about, because I actually ride that on my bicycle.
Yeah.
I see some of that.
They dig there, they've got a shovel, you know, the sheriff always says, do they have a weapon? And I said, well, I'm five foot one, 66 years old. Yeah, I think a shovel is a weapon, but...
Hey, don't sell yourself short because you're 66.
Okay.
So here's what we'll do, Marlene, we'll talk a little bit more about this. Part of our issue there is, because that's actually county.
We don't, we don't own the land, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll, let's get some other people engaged that can help us out over there.
I know the community would love that, and especially in the concert series, I just picked up the postcard, and we all end the Fourth of July, and that, you know, those guys, they dig holes, and I've fallen.
Yeah.
So anyway, I think other people, thank you.
Great, you're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you for your work.
Next speaker, Nanette Burrell.
Welcome.
Hi, hello, Mayor Mento and the city council. My name's Nanette Burrell, I'm a longtime resident of Santee. I'm just here to announce that we are having our second Santee Pride Walk on June 22nd. And by we, I mean the members of Santee United Methodist Church, along with collaboration, various community members and organizations. While this is a community event, it will be hosted at our church, Santee United Methodist. Those involved in us planning feel that this is a very important event for our community and that it's in keeping with the city's commitment to respecting and honoring diversity in our area, as stated in the Resolution 660-2020. So last year was the first time we held this event, we had no idea what to expect. We were, we had over 300 people. It was a wonderful, very, just joyous, happy, very peaceful, peaceful time, and that's what we're looking forward to again. I want to thank Mayor Mento has agreed to speak again this year, and I just would like to invite the council members and anybody to join us on June 22nd. Thank you all for listening, thank you.
Thank you.
And the final speaker is Linda Roach.
Welcome, neighbor.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mento and council members. My name is Linda Roach, and I'm here as a longtime resident of the city of Santee to express my gratitude and congratulations to the city and especially to city staff for the successful planning, coordination, and implementation of our first-ever community celebration. I found it to be an event that authentically represented the intent and the commitment of to Santee's core community values statement, the city's commitment to the well-being and the safety of all community members. So I look forward to future events and opportunities where we can, in truth, share our similarities, celebrate our diversity, and live into our community core values of accountability, community-mindedness, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Great, thank you. Takes us to item number 13, which is a proposed support for the Blue Envelope Program operated by the San Diego Sheriff's Department. And city manager, do you want to kick that off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I would like to introduce, come on up, it's okay, Sergeant Reeves.
Don't be shy.
She's here to give a presentation to the city council. We have had a presentation on this program at the COMPOC Committee and at the city's homeless working group. Everyone was very supportive, and there was an interest in wanting to see if the full council wanted to review this, this particular program, and if the city wanted to come on board as a sponsor of the program. So I'm going to turn it over to our sergeant to be able to give the presentation.
Is it okay if I plug this? Oh, you got it up there.
We're already ahead of you here.
You guys are good. Good evening, my name is Amber Reeves, I'm a sergeant with the San Diego Sheriff's Department, and I'm here to talk about a program that we launched last year in October 2023 called the Blue Envelope. To go into a little bit of history, we're not the ones who created the Blue Envelope, it actually started in the state of Connecticut in 2020. And what they did was they created the envelope you see on your screen, and it was designed to enhance communication between a law enforcement officer and somebody on the spectrum of autism. Riverside County was actually the first agency to bring the Blue Envelope to the state of California, and what they did was they basically copied Connecticut's program and went live with it last year in May. San Diego County, we heard about it shortly after Riverside went live. We wanted to do it a little bit differently.
Little bit better.
There it goes. We wanted it to...
I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you, we're running it from here.
Oh, okay.
So you can just say next slide if you want us to move it. I forgot to tell you that.
Um, we wanted it to do a little bit different. We wanted the program to benefit anybody with a condition or disability that would impact communication, or somebody who would require additional accommodation or awareness during any law enforcement interaction. So we also wanted to make it more inclusive, to go beyond drivers. It could be certainly a driver or a passenger in a vehicle, somebody using public transportation, somebody walking down the street, or riding a bicycle. We do have a short video that kind of goes further into what the program looks like. ...program is now available in San Diego County. It's a new tool to assist law enforcement agencies and community organizations to better understand and assist members of the public with a condition or disability that may impact communication or require additional accommodations or awareness. Here's how it works. Individuals can display one of several items readily displaying the Blue Envelope logo. These items may be a physical blue envelope, wristbands, lanyards, stickers, pens, or other items available for free through our community partners or your local law enforcement agency. This allows a sheriff's deputy or police officer who sees the Blue Envelope logo to know an individual has a condition or disability requiring additional accommodations or assistance during a service call or emergency. There's also Blue Envelope branded products designed to carry important information, such as medical or contact details. Participation in the Blue Envelope Program is free and voluntary. For more information on the Blue Envelope Program and where to pick up the Blue Envelope products, visit the website below. You can also scan the QR code on your screen. Thank you for making San Diego a Blue Envelope County. The, the great thing about this program is there's not a lot of moving parts to it, but it's already accomplished a lot throughout San Diego County. Beyond the physical blue envelopes, we have several wearable items, and I just created some window decals as well for residences. So first responders or the fire department, public works goes to a residence and they see that logo, they'll know somebody in that house might need additional accommodation. We are in the process of creating these hard plastic cards, they're similar to what you would see as a rider card for like MTS or North County Transit District. And that's one example on the screen, somebody can write anything that they want law enforcement to know about them on this card. They can also put emergency contact info, and we're going to also create a version to where somebody will have the ability to put a photograph on there as well. So hopefully, these will come out soon, and they'll be available for, available for everybody throughout the county. MTS is also going to be able to print that in, uh, Blue Envelope logo directly on their rider pass. This is the same thing, if somebody doesn't want to wear the Blue Envelope logo or have it visible on their vehicle, we created these wallet cards, they're just basic stock cards to where somebody can write on there whatever they want law enforcement to know about them during that law enforcement interaction. And when the officer or deputy asks for their identification, they could just pull out this card along with it. This program is fully supported by the Chiefs and Sheriff's Association of San Diego County, as well as our county board of supervisors. So this is not just a Sheriff's Department program, every single local law enforcement agency in San Diego County is also part of this program. So everybody from Chula Vista PD, all the way to Escondido to Carlsbad is participating in the Blue Envelope Program. Some of our early partners, which are great, they're the ones who have made this program so successful. What we did before we went live with the Blue Envelope Program, we went to our community partners first to see how they wanted the program to look like, if this would be something beneficial to their communities, and they've been amazing in launching this program, and they continue to support it and help us out every day. All the training that we have created in the Sheriff's Department, we have distributed to all of our deputies, as well as every law enforcement agency in San Diego County. So if the Sheriff's Department creates any training for the Blue Envelope, whether it be a document or a video, we do share those with all the local police departments as well. I do like to tell people that if somebody is victimized for being a part of the Blue Envelope Program, it is a hate crime on the state and federal level, under Penal Code Section 422.6. And I also like to tell people that this program was not designed to be basically a get out of jail free card. It's a communication tool, so if somebody holds up the envelope and says, hey, I'm part of the program, you can't talk to me, it's the exact opposite. We believe that anybody who wants to take advantage of the Blue Envelope Program, those people want to talk to us, they just want to tell us a better way how to communicate with them. The envelope you see on your screen, I love, it was actually created by our community partners. The first envelope you saw on the first slide with all the words from Connecticut, which was great, we created something very similar, and we handed out to our community partners, and they gave it right back to us and said, this isn't going to work, there's too many words, there's too much legal stuff on it. During a traffic stop, it's a very stressful situation, we want one or two sentences, and we want pictures. So our community partners actually created this envelope for us. And on the back of that envelope, it has that space where you can write whatever you want the law enforcement officer to know about you or somebody in your vehicle. You could put a copy of your driver's license, registration, and insurance, or any other document you feel appropriate inside this envelope. And if you were to get stopped, when the officer asks for your documents, you could just simply hand them this blue envelope. I have told people if they're uncomfortable with putting a copy of their driver's license inside this, they could just write their driver's license number on the flap, and that would be just fine. This is also something I am currently creating, it's basically a point card, so if somebody was a victim or a witness of a violent crime, the officer or deputy needs to get that information out fast to the dispatcher and responding units. So if they're asked a question, they could simply point to whatever answer they wish to. Once this is finished, this is also going to be provided to every law enforcement agency in the county, not just the Sheriff's Department. Here's an example of our flyer, we do have this flyer available on our public website. It is available in nine different languages, and those were determined to be the nine common languages used in San Diego County. All of these flyers are available to download and print, but we do keep a stock of English and Spanish flyers available for anybody who wants one. The best part of this program, it is free, is voluntary, there's no registration or enrollment, you don't have to show proof of a condition or a disability to be a part of the program. No law enforcement station or none of our community partners will ever ask for personal information. So we don't have a database somewhere with people's names, birthdays, addresses, or anything like that, that somebody could simply walk into any of our facilities, ask for whatever item they want, and they'll just be given those items, and that's, that's it. The only thing we do track is how many items we give out, just so we know how many envelopes we've given out. So I think we're about up to maybe 18,000 envelopes we distributed so far throughout the county. That is a QR code to our public website, and if you go on there, it has all of our locations, we're about at 50 community partners right now. And again, all law enforcement stations within San Diego County. If somebody's not comfortable going to a law enforcement station, or if they don't live near one, we have 50 other places where they can go in and request these items. We hope to make Santee our first official Blue Envelope City.
Well, thank you. Do we have any speaker's lips?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? Because I have, I have some comments. Well, I got to tell you that when we heard this at the COMPOC meeting, it was quite interesting. Obviously, there were some former law enforcement in the room, as well as myself, and the things that we talked about is how this is a much more respectful way to greet people that have disabilities. And I know as, you know, as I worked and I ran into people that could, could not communicate, I mean, I've seen officers who, you know, get in fights with these people because sometimes their way of communication is walking away or flailing their arms, and that generated some reaction. And it, the cards there where you can just point at things. I, I could tell you, that's going to save a lot of time and trouble, it's going to save a lot of complaints, a lot of injuries, and, and it didn't take much for me to say, let's go all in on this program, because, well, as much as we can go all in on this program, and bring it to council. And my ask is that, that you would agree that this is worth us providing a sponsorship, and we would be the first city to get on board as a sponsor. Let's go with Rob first.
So I, I, not necessarily a question as far as, maybe it is, so I want to make sure it's clear, there is no cost to the city, we are not, we are not, we don't have to front any more money or anything else, we don't have to have any more resources here at the city, we're just saying we support the program within the city and our deputies to utilize the resources of such, correct?
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure of that. Number two, to our captain, just want to hear from you, do you think that this will help with, with your efforts and what you do and your deputies do on a daily basis within the city of Santee?
Absolutely, sir, I think it'll be very helpful for our deputies to identify people that need special communication, so we can be more gentle and compassionate during our contacts. And I think the majority of this population is going to be our victims and our witnesses more than our suspects, so I think we owe it to them to be extra careful with how we treat them in our contacts. And honestly, I think it'd be an honor for us to have you guys be the first city partner in the county, and that's going to be for perpetuity, so.
Fair enough. So with that motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Okay, Ron, did you have any?
No, it's just, it's a good idea, it's, it's fine with it.
Anything at all? Nora?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All right, then, I have a motion, and mine's not coming up. Oh, okay.
It wasn't technically something that we had to take action on, we could have just given direction, but I think it's, I agree.
We want to memorialize it. Yeah, I like the formality of it.
Yeah, I like the formality of it. Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number 11, which is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the program year 2024 Annual Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG funds to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD or HUD, and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Quality Act.
Mr. Mayor, do, do we need a report on this?
Sean, is there a requirement for hearing?
Well, if you adopt staff recommendations, you'll quickly open the hearing and then you close it. So you don't have to hear the full presentation if you don't wish to.
All right.
So, yeah, make a motion to. I make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, so we'll call that open and closed. Please vote. Good job.
Motion carries unanimously.
You, on the other hand, don't get away that easy.
So that takes us to item number 12, is a public hearing for a tentative map, TM2017-1, Development Review Permit, DR2017-1, and mitigated negative declaration for proposed 17-lot residential subdivision with 14 single-family homes on the undeveloped 27.35-acre property located at the southern terminus of Tyler Street in the low-density residential R1 and park-open space zones. And Vice Mayor, you're going to have to take over because I have a conflict here. Now we'll be losing, leaving the dials.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and honorable members of council. The item before you tonight is a request for a tentative map and development review permit for the division of a 27.35-acre undeveloped property into a 17-lot subdivision consisting of 14 residential lots, one street lot and two open space lots. The project site is located at the current southern terminus of Tyler Street as shown in this aerial image and highlighted here. This is an aerial image looking south onto the property. The site is surrounded by a single-family residential development to the north, east and west and open space to the south with State Route 125, Grossmont College and Mission Trails Regional Park beyond. The site represents one of the last developmental properties in this area with undeveloped property also within the R1 zone located directly north of the site as highlighted here. The 27.35-acre project site, as delineated in red here, is located within the low-density residential or R1 zone and park-open space zone with the proposed 7.588-acre development footprint delineated in blue here within the R1 zone. As with all R1 zoning, the site also has a hillside overlay designation. The 19.77-acre undeveloped portion of the site, which is represented by lots B and C, would remain undeveloped. And that particular portion of the site is within the R1 and park-open space zone. No development would occur within the park-open space zone. And it would be preserved in perpetuity as open space through a conservation easement. Here is a view of the site. This is looking south from the existing terminus of Tyler Street. The 14 residential lots would range in size from 15,000 square feet to 27,197 square feet with each lot containing a one or two-story single-family home. As such, the project would result in a net gain of 14 dwelling units that would be added to the city's housing stock, which aids in meeting the state-mended regional housing needs allocation for the city as outlined in our housing element. The developed portion of the site, including yards and graded slopes, would be landscaped with fire-resistant plants and trees as appropriate within the two fuel modification zones as depicted in this project's landscape plans. In accordance with a fire protection plan reviewed and approved by the fire department, lots one, two and three would have additional, would, would, sorry, pardon, would have the second outer fuel modification reduced, but with the requirement to install a six-foot non-combustible wall along the edge of those three properties in order to have that reduction. Each home would be situated on flat paths within each lot and would comply with the R1 development standards, including setbacks, height and lot coverage. Tyler Street would be extended approximately 600 feet and built as a cul-de-sac street and would serve each resident with vehicular access with each home containing two or three car garages and connected driveways, which would range from 24 feet to 43 feet in length. The proposed homes would be one or two stories and range in size from about 2,800 square feet to about 3,700 square feet. Here are two elevation drawings of the proposed homes, one of the one-story model and one of the two-story model. The homes would feature concrete tiled roofs and a combination of siding, stucco and cultured stone finishes in neutral and earth tone colors. An initial study was prepared for the project. In accordance with CEQA, the analysis indicated that there will not be significant adverse impacts on the environment with mitigation. Let me close your application. Sorry about that. An initial, pardon, an initial study was prepared for the project in accordance with CEQA. The analysis indicated that there will not be significant adverse impacts on the environment with mitigation. A mitigated negative declaration or MND was prepared and advertised for public review and is recommended for approval. All comments received have been reviewed and considered and no substantial new information has been received that has not already been analyzed in the MND. No revisions made to the MND in response to comments constitute substantial revisions as defined in the CEQA guidelines. A full discussion of the environmental issues in response to comments is found in the MND before you. As required, the city prepared responses to comments received during the public review and provided the responses to the commenters within 10 days of this public hearing. Yesterday, the city received additional comments from the wildlife agencies that we have included in your agenda packet. In summary, the additional comments requested a modification to a mitigation measure requiring a more stringent standard for preserve management prior to grading and a correction of the record. The requested correction to the record is reflected in a RADA sheet before you. However, staff is confident that the mitigation measure as written is sufficient. As such, staff recommends that the city council conduct and close the public hearing, adopt the MND and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, authorize the filing of a notice of determination, and adopt the resolutions before you approving the requested tentative map and development review permit. This concludes staff presentation. Available to answer any questions. And the applicant's agent is also present tonight to speak on behalf of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have five speakers. The first speaker is Michael Jefferson. Reminder, you have three minutes.
I'm just the project biologist and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Suzy Foster.
Hi, I'm Suzy Foster and I live on Mesa Heights Road and I'm speaking for, I think a lot of my neighbors. We're very upset, as I think you all would be if you were living where we are living. The reason we bought our house, we picked it out, we looked at Santee for a long, long time. And we came to Mesa Heights and we said, this is it. We had a view of the hill, it was on a cul-de-sac, we had a view out the other way and we were like, this is a great area. Luckily, we have John Minto living on our street and I thought, this is even better. Nothing bad's going to happen on our street with John Minto on it. So now we have this. This is really going to disrupt a lot of families and I don't know if that's been taken into account. And I'm not sure what the timeline is as well. So maybe we can get some clarification of that. And I don't know if there's even anything we can do to stop it. But I just want you all to know, there is a lot of families that have beautiful little kids running on our streets and sidewalks and riding their bikes and having fun. And if you take on this project, we're going to have all kinds of construction, we're going to have workers parking their trucks up and down our streets, we're going to have noise, we're going to have a lot of upheaval. And I, I kind of shudder to even say all this because I hate to be the NIMBY, you know, and which, you know, not in my backyard. But I think it really needs to be vocalized and told that this is really going to affect a lot of families. And I just hope that there's something, if there's something we can do, I hope we can to stop this. So thank you for your time.
The next speaker I have is Larry Walsh.
I'm the civil engineer, project civil engineer available.
Okay. Next speaker is Mark Harris. Also.
I'm with the owners, I'm the owner's representative.
Okay.
Available for questions.
And the final speaker is Jose Reed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I've been living here in Sante since September of 2021, so I haven't had the pleasure to meet many of you. But I came here with my wife. I've been fortunate enough to live here in San Diego County since 2014. I was stationed here as a naval nurse officer and I ended up bringing my wife here, who was a, also a naval officer. We both decided to get out of the Navy and live here. I actually did an entire 50-page spreadsheet on every single state and their median income, the median price for a three-bedroom, two-bath house. I'm pretty nitpicky on the details, but nonetheless, I really appreciate where I live. I also live on the Mesa Heights Road near Suzy. And over the last few weeks, I've been able to do a lot of pleasure reading, going through all the plans. And I, I see there's been a lot of detail that's been put in place between the county biologists, between the owners, between construction, making sure that grading is mitigated. I have been fortunate enough to have my son live here and grow up here for the last few years. He'll be three in June. And I'm expecting my second son, May 23rd of next, for next month. So I'm, I really, very grateful that I have the area that I live in, in the neighborhood that I live in. I did, I wouldn't be doing service for both my sons and for my wife if I didn't mention some of the concerns that I had as far as the, as far as this development. I was at work and I was even just writing it on this little sticky sheet, so I'm just going to bring it up right here. I think some of the concerns that I have is as far as mitigation is just making sure that these are actually enforced and ensuring how they are, how we're, how and who is going to be liable if those mitigations aren't enforced correctly. That's one of my concerns. My second concern that I have is, at least when it comes to reading through some of the finer print, is seeing that there are still moderate to high risk of landslides in that area based on some of the geological reports. Again, I understand that there's mitigations in place, but I have to be mindful of what is going to be in place for that. I think there was a comment, and there's nothing against you, sir, that this is one of the last areas where building can be done in place. But I was able to find that there are 154 condominium units, 39 houses and 10 apartment units that are all potentially up to be prepared or at least under construction. Whether approved or not, it's not necessarily the point, but I just wanted to be aware that there are other places. The last thing I'll try and mention in the last seven seconds is that I didn't have any choice on fire insurance. So there's.
No further speaker, sir.
I have a few concerns. I didn't know who to talk to about this, but I'll start with Mike. This papers that came in, I, I see a lawsuit happening about the 29%. And I don't really want to be in the middle of a lawsuit. We've got enough of them as it is. So I would like to see something done to make people happy before we even go any further with this project. Because if we're going to get sued the minute we, which we get sued for, for need of revenge, take your pick. You can come up and talk if you want to. If you want to answer the question, you're welcome to come up and do it. But basically, it's, it's 29% and we're going to be in a big problem is what I see.
Yes, so, sir, can you? No, can you put your name? Michael Jefferson. I am the biological consultant for the project and I prepared all of the CEQA documents. So the way that they did the math is there's open space park as the graphic showed. The rule is for the HCP, that hasn't been approved, but the draft HCP for the city, is that it's not a mitigation ratio or mitigation acreage, it's a straight 70% of the property has to be avoided and put into a conservation easement and managed in perpetuity. So when we originally sent in all of these documents to the agencies years ago, the calculations have always been the same. And we have never had a comment back from them on this point.
You do now.
Until this morning. So we haven't actually had a chance to kind of discuss it with them. But the point is, is that we are preserving greater than 70% of the property.
71.
Precisely. But, and you can impact open space. You, you just do double mitigation. So it's kind of like they're conflating two issues. What's mitigation if you had done it as a mitigation ratio versus a pure 70% preserve project? So there's easements in places, but now it's not only going to be open space, it's going to be a conservation easement that's managed. So it is totally different.
Just going to manage it is the.
Once it's approved, it's going to go to the final map process. And in that phase is when usually you get the habitat manager, you create the par and then the endowment is made. And then as, as a condition to the grading permit.
Yeah, we're having this problem in Sky Ranch right now is like brush clearing and things like that.
So brush clearing would be a responsibility of the HOA. So this would, the, the management of the open space for this one, because there's no impacts to sensitive species or sensitive habitats, it's just a make sure no one goes in there and disturbs it.
Okay. So this other part is you're putting up a wall instead of putting 100, you know, the fire department always says 100 feet.
That's right. And that's because of grading.
I see 67 feet and I see even less than that where the wall is going to go. My brother's house burned down in 2007. We didn't give a damn about a six-foot wall.
The, it's, it's there for two reasons. First and foremost, right in that front area, there's a little section of disturbed wetlands. There's a couple willows. If they had done the grading to put in the road, the house, the road and the house, it would have forced grading to go down into the wetlands. And then you would have pulled it back out, but it would have destroyed all the wetlands and then you'd have to replant it. So first and foremost, the wall was put there, it was going to be a shorter stem wall. But because it's on wetlands and they couldn't get the 100 feet, they increased the height of it. And it's approved by the fire marshal and everybody because it's not on the upland side. That firewall is on the wetland side and it's a really narrow section pinned between the existing houses. And then it goes like maybe 50-foot of wetlands and then our proposed firewall. So it's the potential for fire in that little section, it's a very small area and it's wet. So that's not the upland side.
I've heard that before and before. So let's, can you go back to the map just of a.
Which map, sir?
The map just of the open space right now where it's open space, that thing. Okay, so the, the. Okay, so the houses, how far are they going to be from that cul-de-sac below them?
So that, gosh, I don't have a pointer.
This is the bottom line, bottom yellow line.
Yeah, that bottom yellow line, you see the two blue dots on the two corners. That's effectively the bubble where the homes are going to be.
Okay, so there's no.
Oh, I can't. Oh, okay, cool. So right here, there's Tyler Street it enters.
Right.
This is the bubble.
Right.
So the whole slope, well, first and foremost, you're going to have a non-native grassland buffer.
How long?
That'll be a minimum of 200 feet. Because you're having 100 feet for the fuel modification, then 100 feet. And then you start getting to the slopes. And the slopes are where all of the sensitive habitat and air catchers. So the project is pulled all the way right against Tyler Street. And the area of the wall is right, well, the wetlands, not wetlands, it's like a willow scrub is right here. And the wall is right there.
Okay.
So it's, you could see it's kind of like, well, this is the fire, where the fire marshal is really concerned with.
Right.
This is all maintained grass. It's less than, you know, knee-high.
So down on the bottom here, the bottom half, again, I go back to the cul-de-sac area there, off of Mesa Road, coming up Mesa Road. If, go back to the map, that's fine. So if you, if you go, if you go back up Mesa Road where it thins out there, you know, you get a fire going up there. And I'm fine for you or the fire marshal answering this. Are we going to have a problem?
Well, I can only speak.
You've got all this material above it, too.
That's right. So this is not where the development is running. This, and all of these homes, actually, the current owner is paying for fire modification to be done all along this line here. So the existing conditions will remain the same from the development side of the world as it is today. So the house load is on the other side. It's on the.
The north side?
That's right.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah.
The 125 side.
That's right.
Okay. So how much space will be between the two, do we know? Again, I keep seeing 67 feet is what I saw. And I even looked a little closer now and it's been lot seven is, wasn't that much?
So here's the, here are the two zones. So the first three homes are, they're close.
What's close mean? Sorry to be picky.
Let's see, look at the landscape plan.
It's 40 feet. Yeah, that, so the closest it comes there is that 67-foot number. And then it pushes, pushes away. And that's all re-landscaped. So the fact is, right, it'll be irrigated landscaping. So for those first three homes, it'll probably be a lesser fire potential. And then the rest of it will remain effectively the same.
Okay. How about six, seven, eight, and nine? Those are the ones I'm more concerned about.
Oh, those ones in terms of, in terms of fire?
Right.
Potential? Oh, those guys have the full 100 feet.
You brought it up, now that you put that in my mind.
What?
And landslideed now that you put it in my mind.
Oh, well.
Brought up landslide, so I'm just throwing that out at you.
I'm the biologist.
Your fault, your fault, not mine.
But I'm sure Michael can speak to landslide issues, so.
You, but go ahead with the fire, I apologize.
Well, I mean, the fire marshal, the, there has been no reduction in the standards for fire protection. And the flame lengths are actually really low because like we were saying, this is adjacent to.
Michael, Michael, can you speak more to the microphone? A couple of times I was going to ask you, but you kept getting further away.
So it's adjacent to low grasslands. It's not adjacent to like that heavy brush and shrub. And like I said, there's hundreds of feet between even the end of the brush management zone and up that slope. So for fire protection, these, the project actually safe, makes the whole local area, that corner safer because it extends the brush management. And it, you know, it clears more vegetation than before. And it was just the grasslands.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You can stay on that map. Oh, I'm sorry, the homes. Where you were when I, when you, no, go back to the aerial view.
Aerial, okay.
Sorry. That one. Okay. So a long time ago, when I moved to Santee originally, the house, I think it's five over, it's on Prospect Avenue, five over from Slope Street with the white roof to the west. So, but on Prospect. Yeah, that one right there. That was one of the places I lived with my two small children. And there weren't homes. I don't even know, I don't even think Slope Street went all the way through. A lot of these homes weren't built at that time. So I do understand concerns about construction happening around where you live and where your family lives. But, you know, there are rules in place for developers and they need to follow those rules. Where, it's 14 homes, so it's not as expansive as even the one development that's kind of newer. I guess it's east? I don't know what the name of the streets are right there, but, or Mesa Heights, where's a lot of, was a lot of homes. So it's, when they say that it's a completion of the development, it just means of this Mesa Heights development, which Tyler Street is part of it. And the 14 homes are the last remaining ones there. In District Three where we live, where I live, and I don't live on Prospect anymore. I don't live in that home anymore. But there has been a lot of infill, the most infill projects for housing to meet our housing mandates. And so I understand the concerns that people have all around the area when it relates to construction. Where I live now, still in District Three, this is R1, so residential one development. But where I live now is, I believe, R7 behind my house. So it's just a matter of time before something a lot, and I live in an R1 neighborhood, which is, you know, one-unit traditional homes. But I know that at some point, a developer owns the land behind me and they can build what we call R7, which seven housing units per, you could.
Seven to 14 dwelling units.
Seven to 14 dwelling units. So, you know, and that means stories and all that kind of thing as well. So I understand and appreciate those concerns. And if there are concerns during construction, I'm happy to hear them. Staff is happy to, our director of, well, any director over there, but really whoever needs to be contacted, we'll, we'll, I've, I've been through this. Our city manager, we'll start there, our city manager. And, you know, that's what we're here for during these times. But, but the developments are, they need to happen. And it's, you know, 14 more homes. And then it's done in that area. So that's the point that I think Michael Coyne was trying to make is there's 14 left to build out here. 70% of the property is going to be open space and, or 71%. And it is a flat grassland on the Tyler Street part where they're going to be building. And they've gone through all the environmental processes. They've talked to our fire chief and fire department. And so, you know, to me, it, you know, once they're done, it'll be 14 beautiful homes in the neighborhood. And so I will make a motion to approve.
I actually want to kind of ditto what Councilmember Koval was stating. This is, it is something that we need to do. We, you know, we keep complaining that we don't have enough housing stock. We don't have enough of this. And then, you know, people get upset when we build houses. So it's, it's nice to finally see a project that is a single-family detached house with an actual lot. I think you said the smallest lot is 15,000 square feet.
Yes, sir.
I mean, up to over half an acre. Houses that are family-sized and maybe multifamily-sized at 3,800 square feet. This is a, wow, it's a, they, I think they did a really, a really good job here. The way you're keeping the slope open. And that's frankly what, that's what most people will see when they're looking towards the, towards that view. Keeping the single stories mixed in with that single story, you're still going to see that slope. You're still going to see the hilltops. You're still going to see a lot of that. Much like Councilmember Koval, right behind my house, from the time I bought it in 2000, they, I read all the paperwork, as the other gentleman stated he did, did all my due diligence, read all the paperwork and saw that there's, somebody owns that land behind my house. And at some point, they had already had lots split that they were going to build on at some point. Well, 20 years later, they still haven't built them. But it's going to happen. It's going to happen. The housing, the housing crunch is real and they're needed. And, you know, frankly, they can just get more money for them now than they could have back then. So I understand why people are more willing to take the chance of trying to build something in California. I appreciate the fire mitigation. And yeah, you, I, and I understand what the developer was saying there in that it's not making, they're not making this worse, they're making it better. So you, to say that, well, what are you doing for the, what would that be? The, almost the south, the southern section of it? That's not, nobody's doing anything for it now. So the fact that they're grading it and doing the 200-foot setbacks and all the other mitigation, it's making it safer than it is currently. And not making it, not making it more difficult. So I, yeah, I didn't understand that one. But that's, I think they've just done a bang-up job with this project for as small as it is. It does help with our housing numbers and our housing requirements. And I'm just so happy to finally see a single-family detached project, family-sized project, finally come into our books again. Wasn't sure if we'd get anything other than condos ever again. So I second the motion to approve this development. And obviously, there, you're still going to make sure that this last-second fire, or mitigation land issue is resolved because that's a requirement for the next stage, correct?
Yes, they still need to get an approved habitat management plan from the wildlife agencies. So they still need to work with the wildlife agencies.
Yeah, so it has nothing to do with the process that we're agreeing to at this moment.
No.
Thank you. Second.
Yeah, this is just the attendant map process right here. So obviously, like you said, there's still other things that have to be followed, go through. You know, talk about the construction. Susie, you're talking about disrupting the families. And yeah, construction does have a little bit of impact into communities. But like Councilman Koval said, is there's rules and things in place to make sure that the developers and construction guys do the right thing. Is there, those are public streets right there, obviously, on Tyler Street. But can we, you know, try to get them not to park on the, on the, you know, in front of people's houses, the construction guys? And make sure they park on the, onsite? You know, is that, you know, a fair ask? I guess I'm looking at you, Mark. You know, there, is the construction guys park on onsite and not, you know, on the public streets in front of people's houses much? Yeah, exactly. No problem. The mitigation enforcement, land, you know, insurance, the fire insurance, I actually had my home canceled. You know, my fire insurance at Farmers just canceled mine just a couple months ago. I had to go find a new insurance carrier for my home right here in Santee. It's happening in all of, you guys hear the stories in the news. It's happening all over the place. And unfortunately, this is a nature of living in California with our, you know, fire issues that we have. I think our houses are a lot safer than a lot of other areas. I think we get put in a bubble or something in there. But it's just the reality of it and our premiums are going through the roof. I mean, I think, how many, you guys have renewed your homeowners or car insurance or medical lately? It is just, it's astronomical. We're all getting hit in the pocketbook everywhere we can. But I just had a couple of questions, actually, back to the fire setback. So Michael, can you, do you know on Tyler Street, no, the current homes? Go back. So when they built Mesa Heights, you know, that subdivision there, I want to say it was 1996-ish or so, because I remember when it was being built. And at that time, the setbacks, you know, from that back of the house to the, on Tyler Street, let's just use that as a reference there. Back of the house to that fence, is that 100 feet?
No, it's not.
It's not, right? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be. The standards have changed, they've increased. Right? So the standards have increased to make a larger fire separation. And with, and like Councilman Mills said, as you develop a land, you create a bigger buffer for the homes around there. So we're actually increasing the, you know, the fire safety in today's standards, you know, even, even greater than what there were when those homes were currently built. So those are just a couple of my comments right there. You guys want to vote?
Vice Mayor, may I make a very quick point of order? Councilmember Hall raised a question related to the Wildlife Agency's email that came in yesterday, particularly as to the way the percentages were calculated. And I just want to point out that staff has given you an errata that does exactly what the Wildlife Agencies have asked to be done. And no one has appeared here tonight to object to that. So that issue is done in my mind because we've basically done exactly what they asked to be done, so.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries with three ayes. Mayor Minto refused and Councilmember Hall voting no.
Bring Mayor Minto back.
Call the speakers, let's for next.
We have no speakers, sir.
Thank you.
We just go home. Nope, you're not done yet. Okay, we're going to go to council reports? Anything wrong?
No, not this time.
All right.
Yeah, on Friday night, last Friday night, I attended the 2024 Public Safety Awards banquet. It was the 36th Annual Awards Banquet. And it was held at the Knott's Berry Farm Hotel in Buena Park. And there are Heartland Communications Teams that won their awards were formally recognized. And as a reminder, that was for the work that they did through the January floods and the GIS operator. So it was a great, a great ceremony. That's it.
No, sir. No report.
Councilmember McNellis.
No reports, sir. Reports, sir, other than reminding everybody the Hero's Dinner is tomorrow. Think there's still tickets available if they want to see a public recognition of those that have, that serve our city and keep it, keep it functioning properly and safe and all the best of the best. So Carlton Oaks tomorrow night, please show up and support those that have, that make Santee the best place that it is. In fact, the second safest city in San Diego County, if you didn't hear the news.
So I spent, let's see, Tuesday through Saturday in Sacramento last week. It was a rough week. And we, I had an opportunity to speak with several legislators regarding some of the negative impacts on some Assembly and Senate bills that have been proposed this last year, all over 2,500 bills. And then on Wednesday, I had an opportunity to go over to the Capitol and walk the halls, talk to folks out there and let them know that some of the legislation also there was, that they're proposing was not good for us. There's a lot of unintended consequences. One of the bills that we talked about that we're trying to defeat is one, I know that we all talk about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, the RENA, the numbers, I think, Michael, you probably talked about that in your presentation. And there's a bill proposed right now. There's nearly 200 cities in the state of California, there's over 200 actually, that are not within compliance to their housing element. And that's all governed by housing, the housing authority up in California, state of California. And so the bill that's proposed is that any city does not come within compliance of that housing element. It's a $50,000 a month, a month fine for the cities. And the thing is that they continue to make it more and more and more difficult to be able to, to comply. And many of the coastal cities are the hardest hit by that, especially because of the, many of them are higher density, higher social, economic income. And so. And so they are probably some of the first people that are made looked at. An example in Santee that I've used when I talk to the legislatures legislators is that, for instance, we get sued on a lot of our housing development projects. And so it's almost impossible for us, while we're involved in litigation, to comply with the housing element. And so if they need to do something to make, you know, make the bad guys, if I can use that term, the bad guys who just absolutely refuse to come into compliance, you know, go ahead, you know, use the hook on them. But like us, put a toll on it, for instance. We've been involved in litigation here in our city for at least three years and then other times before that and before that and before that. And we're in the sixth cycle of our housing element. And so that makes it difficult for us to come into compliance. So so we're trying to beat back on that so that the citizens of Santee don't have to come up with $50,000 a month out of their pocket. It's very, matter of fact, you know, that could actually be a Eighth Amendment violation, cruel and unusual punishment. And so but we're talking about things like that, we're talking about other issues regarding fire and, you know, the responsibility between the municipalities, counties and other agencies and the wildland fire interface. Something I learned new this week is that California Constitution actually spells out exactly how those wildland interface, you know, compliance or measures are are made. And it actually doesn't mean that they dictate, CalFire doesn't dictate to a city or minis- or county how it's done. They have to they have to collaborate with them to find a fair and equitable solution. And just in case you're interested, that's Article 10, Section 2 of the California Constitution, sir. And so those are the kind of things that we talk about up there. And and, you know, there's a lot of legislators that just don't really care about what we're doing down here because they are separated from their constituents a lot. And so if you want to, you know, get somebody up there in the state legislature, you know, like somebody that's been at the local level before, has had to feel the pain instead of just walking off and, you know, getting elected up there. That's just my little tantrum, I guess, sir. So other than that, I don't have anything except that we're up there fighting for you guys, fighting for you. So city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one brief note and I will announce this at all of our next couple of meetings in the month of May as well. The city of Santee is partnering with our military unit to support them in trying to raise some money for, at this point, our Marines in HMH 462 is the name of their unit. They're the heavy haulers, they fly the helicopters, they do a lot, yeah, that's exactly what they are. They do a lot of work for the military and they are our adopted unit. And they are have asked for a fundraiser event to help them get the Marines to be able to participate in their own Marine Ball because the prices of going to the ball and the price of putting the events on are very costly at this point. And they're trying to find a way to keep the price down for the Marines. So all of them, including the enlisted, who aren't officers, who don't have a lot of extra money, will be able to participate. So the city is sponsoring a Hero's Golf Classic. It is on Friday, May the 31st, at Carlton Oaks Golf Course here in the city of Santee. It is a great event. If you are interested in participating to help support the Marines, you can do so by going online on the city website. We have a link there and there is a QR code that you can sign up for the activity. It's $125 a golfer, $500 for a foursome. Or the better bet is we are offsetting the cost for the Marines to participate to a cost of $75. If you want to try to help just the Marines participate, you can make a donation of $75 to help a Marine be able to participate in this activity. If you'd like to sponsor a hole or if you want to give a donation to go towards gift basket drawings, those kinds of things, for opportunity drawings, we would certainly appreciate that. And if you have any questions, please see me afterwards or give a call over to City Hall. We're trying to help our Marines, they do a lot for our country, we want to try to stand up for them. Thank you so much.
City attorney.
Mayor and Council, two quick points. The United States Supreme Court continues to issue decision or hear issues that greatly affect the cities. The court issued a case that's called Sheets versus County of El Dorado recently. It's pretty technical, but basically it'll affect how we adopt and impose mitigation fees. So that'll be something we'll be working with staff to implement on a going-forward basis. And then you may have heard some coverage, there was a lot of coverage on the news about the city of Grants Pass case that I mentioned and updated the council on previously. This question, the question there is whether enforcement of no camping ordinances constitutes an Eighth Amendment violation, which Mayor mentioned, because it's cruel and unusual punishment. Oral argument on that case occurred on Monday. It was a very divided court and really focused on whether the law punishes someone's status or whether the law punishes someone's conduct, such something that we've talked about here. And of course, our ordinance for the river is specific just to conduct having, you know, fire or other actions that that harm specific interest. So the court will issue a decision this summer. I anticipate, my rec- my guess will be that there'll be a narrow decision that allows for more enforcement because I think the bulk of the questions suggested that there be some pullback. But I do think there'll be continued limits that protect people who really have no choice and and really have a certain status and and are not really engaging in conduct, but they're just they just don't have a place to go. So we'll see and I'll report back to you when the decision is issued. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have no closed session tonight, so that means we are adjourned.